Yes?
I would like to call this meeting forward. Please stand for the speech of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, Ms. Chick, please call over.
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Janet Chick is here. John Zarzepki is absent with notice. Brad Kuzno?
Here.
Sam Iacquinto is absent with notice. Cecily Infante?
Here.
Eman Guer is absent with notice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I make the motion as per the agenda as presented.
So, on some else questions?
Support by Ms. Chick. Any questions on your motion? Seeing none on my favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Aye, said. Call to the public. Anyone wish to address the public? Seeing none, move on. No clarifications since there's no more comments. Of course, unless anyone would like to comment. No, thank you. Correspondents, Ms. Burden?
Hi.
There's no public hearings tonight. Reports of good news. Order trustees, Ms. Chick?
Order trustees, we have January 23rd. We have a short meeting. We approve the lease agreement of the 2nd floor of the public estate, building list of minor changes. There was discussion on changing the office space for the staff on the first floor of possible changes to the second floor included in the meeting room. And there's additional discussion on the agenda for both. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, ZDA, Mr. Kuzno?
Uh, ZDA met on January 22nd. We approved the request for variance at 442 Short Drive to allow a garage to be built on site with no principal or valiant. Almost across the street, uh, the raised existing garage and replacing it.
Thank you. Uh, staff, Ms. Burden?
Yeah, nothing.
Thank you. Wanting to consult with Mr. Williams?
Uh, yeah, I have, uh, three items. Uh, one, uh, just an announcement and a reminder that we have scheduled, um, we have released and currently are, uh, taking questions on the, uh, request for proposals for the North Village, uh, site. And we have scheduled, uh, here at Township Hall, uh, two weeks, uh, from today, um, the informational session. Uh, and that will be, uh, in the afternoon prior to the planning commission meeting. Uh, so I should have a report for planning commission on, uh, the evening that night about the results from that meeting. Um, we're certainly spreading the word, uh, in the, um, outreach materials that the township has been, uh, circulating. There is social media tools as well as, uh, some email language. And we've sent, uh, letters to specific developers, uh, that were targeted for solicitation. Um, and anyway, it's called Valletta. We've had a few contacts and expect more in the coming weeks going up to our information session. Um, so that is one announcement. Um, the second announcement, uh, which is really an update, um, at the last planning commission meeting, uh, we were, uh, directed to work with the applicant for the Joma Road, uh, private road application. Um, we, we have had a few communications with them, uh, scheduled, uh, meeting, um, to coordinate with the applicant on some of those questions. Uh, the meeting hasn't been, been scheduled, but I will keep planning commission surprise, uh, progress we make and, uh, certainly will bring that case back to you, uh, when some of the questions, uh, planning commission asks us to answer. Uh, if we have a satisfactory answer, then, uh, the applicant is ready to present the case again. And that is my, my second update. My third update this evening is I would, uh, like to introduce Alex Novak. Um, Alex is a new assistant planner, uh, with us at McKenna. And she's going to be helping me with, uh, both the zoning update work I discussed this evening as well as some, uh, some work for the, uh, R and P. Um, and I always think it's good for, uh, people to meet, um, our team. And so I thought about if she could come tonight and, and if you want to get a higher.
Yeah, hello. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for having me to participate in this.
Thank you. Welcome.
That my report?
Thank you. Uh, there's no park center's report, uh, Mr. Knight, Melissa Absinthe. And what is downtown planning group report, Ms. Infante?
Downtown planning group met, um, 22nd of January. Again, uh, certainly the balance of the meeting was very enthusiastic interest and concern about 75 Barker and a desire to improve and increase the value of its use. Uh, and again enthusiastic support, but the group is very willing to do a lot of work. And the DDA also passed a motion to ask the board trustees to direct the planning commission to look at the underlying zoning parcels in Northmore Lake and North Village Township overlay south of Northmore Lake and, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Chick?
Uh, um, according to downtown development group, was that the, uh, the DDA and the downtown development group or is that just downtown development group meeting?
It was the DDA and the downtown development group.
Okay, right. And you said that, that the downtown development group would be likely to work on 75 Barker? Is that the DDA or downtown development group?
It would be really difficult to extract the two in that, that group. Um, I would say they have a group, so it would be the DDA and the DPG.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, don't want to finish business. New business. This discussion is on the ordinance supervision schedule. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Um, yeah, so, um, I've, I've wanted to present, uh, the schedule for the zoning update, uh, for discussion. And as packed in, I also included, um, the memorandum that we discussed in October. Uh, this is an unchanged memorandum, so, but it's the basis for us starting the work. Um, my main question for discussion this evening, uh, will be if, since October, uh, there has been any, uh, specific issues, particularly urgent, uh, zoning issues, uh, that have risen in any planning commissioners minds, I'd like to kind of take note and inform the discussion this evening about those. Um, but if it suits, um, the chair and the commission, maybe I should start by walking through, um, the, uh, project schedule, uh, that is the first exhibit dated February 2nd, 2018.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, great. Um, so, um, as you know, we, we were interested in doing a zoning update. Um, as part of this, we don't want to, uh, just, just pin a few things. We want to make sure if we're going to dive into it, that we are somewhat comprehensive. Uh, we know through reviewing site plans and through the working, helping administration and outreach to the board, planning commission, as well as the DDA, um, that there are some issues that have risen to talk, and we can summarize those, um, in some of the memos and previous discussions. Um, but we really also need to do a formal technical review, which means we can go through the whole ordinance, uh, with the context and the direction that we received. Uh, but we want to look at for each, each district that permitted and conditional uses. Uh, so are the uses in that district, do they make sense? Are they defined appropriately? Uh, are they up to date, consistent with today's standards? And, um, aligned with the purpose of each district? Um, we want to review, uh, standards for special land use approval to see if those are still, uh, current or if we want to make any modifications to some of the special land use requirements, uh, in the districts. Um, one of the big things we've discussed are the administrative procedures and the standards for approval. Um, and one of the really important reasons to do a technical audit is that, um, while there are sections that govern those procedures, uh, there are other, you know, other sections that also have procedural requirements. Two that we've dealt with somewhat recently are, um, the standards for, uh, for instance, site con video plans or plan use development plans as well as the standards for private road approval. Uh, so when we look at the overall, uh, development approval and procedures, we want to make sure that it's aligned with our site con requirements and our application requirements are aligned even for those special projects too. And, uh, the technical review is going to help us, um, make sure that we're assessing across the board, um, how any changes we make to our administrative procedures and standards will be effective for all types of projects. And then another important thing for us to look at in the technical review are specific development standards like, um, law requirements, building setbacks, access requirements, uh, and, you know, architectural and landscape standards, those types of things. Um, so what we, what we're going to do now is start that broader technical review. And that is going to be something we're going to be accomplishing in, in the background over the course of the next three months. Uh, we'll provide reports to planning commission on it, but it will take us a while to do the work. And, uh, when we're done with that work, there will be, uh, technical memo that will produce that will be the results of that, that technical review, uh, for discussion. It won't actually result in, you know, proposed amendments. It will be, these are the findings from the technical review. Uh, and that's the first step. Um, I can certainly take questions as I go or I'll, I'll just proceed.
A quick question?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll be able to add to that list then as we discuss, like your, as you, as you produce those, uh, areas that need to be clarified if, if we see fit, any others?
Yes.
Not included in your, in your review?
Yes, and
Okay.
That actually is one of the other main purposes. Thanks for asking that question of doing a technical review is by coming back and reviewing that memo with planning commission. It's also an opportunity for planning commission to say, hey, wait a second, you know, this is important and your technical review didn't reveal that. So it's, it's really, um, you know, a more in-depth look at what we think the major issues are. And commenting on that document is, um, it's a pretty important part of the process.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
So you're going to be starting like with section one and going through the entire manual? Is that what your plan is? Or do you have specific sections that you find that pop out that you feel need priority? Attention?
The way the memo will be organized will be by topic. It will be kind of by major zoning theme. And, um, within the, within that, we'll identify specific sections or findings. But to do the work, we're going to be, we're going to be reading through the entire, entire ordinance. Um, but the memo, it won't be organized, you know, section one, section two, section three, um, because generally we think organizing by issue is a more productive way to present the information. Um, in the meantime, okay, uh, in the meantime, while we're doing that, um, we know that there are a number of somewhat urgent amendments that are kind of already on our list that we, we can proceed with and we don't want to hold up business on those. In this example, I put, um, just a simple example of revisions to accommodating temporary firework sales. Um, we know that this, there's been some practices that have permitted this type of use in the township. Uh, but last year we found that there were, um, not specific guidelines for approval of these temporary uses, um, but generally people like it. So we want to fix those types of things, uh, to make sure that this year when people request firework sales, um, we have an ability to approve them, uh, according to the regulations. So that's an example. There's some other minor fixes. Uh, Vidia has a list of about eight things, um, and what, we want to start working on these immediately. So while we're doing the technical review, I'll try to bring these one or two per meeting, um, so that planning commission can review them in, in, you know, chunks that, uh, can be discussed productively along with any other agenda items we have.
Ms. Chick has a question?
So can Vidia provide us a list of what she's targeting initially?
Yeah, um, Vidia or myself will. So that, um, I, I have a list from Vidia that's, some of actually these things are highlighted in my October 11th memo too. I just know since that memo was issued, there's probably five or six other things Vidia has mentioned to me, including temporary fireworks. Um, so the next step would be to kind of add to that list and start working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, uh, the next thing on, on the schedule, um, submit technical and minor amendments to review with planning commission. This is, uh, this is the work that I think would fall in the next phase and, and be somewhat coordinated with our findings from the, uh, from the technical review too. These are maybe a little bit more substantial fixes, but things that we can do within the regulatory structure of the, uh, current master plan. Um, so, you know, we've already started the sign review, but it's, I would say they're on that level of, um, significance where they are substantive changes, uh, but they're substantive changes that are aligned with, um, the current, uh, master plan, the 2014 master plan. And we would like to have an opportunity to prepare those minor amendments early in this process too. So I would call this, you know, not urgent and small, but substantive, uh, but to be worked on in the near term. And, um, those three items, I think really are the first phase of our zoning update process. Where we're going to go after that in terms of the year-long process, um, is into a more substantial update. And I think when we get into the, the work of the more substantial update, our recommendation would be that anything that doesn't come out of this first three months becomes a part of adopting amendments all at once, um, when everything's ready. And, uh, that, the reason to suggest that is it will be kind of easier to, um, do that many amendments in one process, easier to notice and update the entire, uh, ordinance as, as one update. Um, so if it, you know, if we don't tease out in the first three months, we're going to be doing more substantial amendments in kind of one process over the following, um, six or seven months with the idea that the whole process will not take more than a year. Does this make sense? Larry, you're, you have a question?
Uh, just, so the items in the first three, uh, categories may go through the, the process quicker than items after what you're saying would start with the definitions and consistencies and conflicts. So
Correct.
Are we, are we going to try to at least group these items in the first three topics so that we're not having a public hearing once a week? Is that, I mean, there's, there's obviously some things that are more, um, a priority you indicated, but you're still going to try to group those? Am I correct?
Yeah, so that's a great clarification. I, I should probably make it clear. I guess I'm suggesting we have what I called urgent, which are things we know, you know, are fixes generally agreed upon that need to be done, say, before the summer, you know, or, you know, as early as possible. The second would be substantive but minor amendments that should still be done quickly, but might need a little bit more review by planning commission. Um, and those might still be, we might discuss them at every meeting, but again, we say the minor but substantive amendments, we should adopt those all at once too. So that's a second public hearing. And then the third would be anything that the technical review identifies that we should look at, that doesn't fall into a minor and substantive amendment or an urgent amendment would be grouped with the overall zoning update. And we would, we would continue working throughout the whole time, but plan to adopt all of those, um, at the end of the process in a third public hearing.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So within that third group now, so we've got the technical review. Um, it's identified what could go in the first two as a minor or urgent amendment. The third group would be our plans for, uh, a more substantive and kind of holistic zoning update. Um, we'll be looking at, um, the items from the technical review, definitions, inconsistencies, conflicts with city code, um, changes to state code, uh, which is, you know, a general update. Um, we'll look at, um, zoning board of appeals cases to see, um, what the pattern of, or if there is a pattern to frequently, um, cases that frequently have received variances to see if those codes are actually things we should change. Um, I mentioned current legal issues, uh, so changes to state code or land use policy. I've added in here, um, following the zoning board of appeals review, uh, the goals of the 2014 master plan and downtown North Village plan, uh, downtown and North Village plan, that should read, uh, when adopted. Um, we spoke at the last meeting about the potential for planning commission to initiate an adoption of the downtown plan and the North Village plan. Um, that could really be done as soon as the township. Both those documents are ready. Uh, it would require, um, a notice of intent to plan, a 63, three-day review period of those documents and a, um, formal adoption of those documents in order to incorporate them into the zoning process. Um, previously we had proposed that this step would also include any updates that were identified in a master plan revision. Um, I think the, the board has indicated they might want to look at that decision on doing a master plan revision within the next three months. So this could potentially, um, be inclusive of master plan changes. Certainly could be inclusive of changes that are consistent with the North Village plan and the downtown plan. Um, and we could consider changes that are consistent with that now, provided that those documents were adopted at the time these zoning ordinances were adopted. If, does that make sense to everybody? I think what we want to do is we want to, um, update the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the most recent and best planning policy, uh, that the township has developed. Uh, but we also want to, um, move forward in the, the process of adopting that, those policies. Makes sense? So, um, the next, uh, item on the list is, uh, that we will submit the zoning ordinance for draft and review with planning commission. Um, this, we, our intent is to continue working at our regular, um, meetings. So I think that planning commission will be able to preview a lot of these ideas as we go, but at some point we will have a formal draft and that draft will be ready for planning commission review and comment. Um, we may, you know, I've, I've, uh, then put a review and revise draft with planning commission. Um, I suggested, uh, here that, um, that we, uh, review, um, the ordinance at one of our regularly scheduled meetings. Um, and then, uh, you know, one is a discussion and then maybe the next one is a review of the comments since we meet twice a month. Uh, but the idea is to make, uh, both meetings productive. Um, and I think what I might do is, um, once the technical amendment, uh, or the technical review is done, possibly even structure those topics, uh, to be coordinated with specific meetings. Uh, so planning commission might know what to expect, uh, based on our scheduled meetings for the year.
Yes, I, I have a comment or this, my concern is that I think it's going to take more than one meeting to revise or to review the whole zoning or, you know, with all the changes. I mean, are you, are you going to make, uh, I mean realistically, I don't see us being able to get it done that swiftly in one meeting, maybe two, three. I mean, what's your thought on that?
I, I think that we should discuss the preferred procedures with planning commission for adoption. Like I said, you know, I, I would like to do kind of a topical evaluation as we go. Um, but once we have the draft, um, I know from experience, you know, we could work through, you know, we could do a read-through of the entire, you know, every amendment in the draft. And then by the time we were done doing that, we might want to go through and do it again. And you can just start into this process where, you know, you're not making progress. Um, so another, another potential option would be to, um, to, um, you know, give planning commissioners the option to review and then submit comments to me directly. And then I could prepare a summary document to review. Um, but we, you know, um, if, if we want a document adopted in a year, um, it's, it will be important to us to have some efficiency when we get there.
Right, um, and I see your point. I mean, it, it will be broken down further and we'll, already had discussed, um, many of the topics, so maybe my concern isn't a valid one. You know, because we are, through the process, it's going to be broken down and we are going to be reviewing each of those separate, you know, separately. But perhaps maybe I'm worried where I shouldn't, I guess. Ms. Chick?
Um, I'm being on the planning commission for the last nine years. Larry's been on the planning commission probably for as long and broad as well. We went through all of these, um, ordinances and sections up until I think it was the landscaping section. Um, and I know it's been over a nine-year period and there's probably some changes that have to be made, but I would not expect that there would be that drastic of changes unless they had to comply with different acts that have come about since then. But, um, and then sometimes it depends on the planner, you know? We've had a couple of different planners and they have a position on the sections and how it should read or what it should say or what we should do. And when you have different board members and they have input, it changes too. So, um, I, I understand that we want to review them. I, I'm not sure that it's going to be such a huge change, but I don't know. I, I don't want to have to come back in another five years and have to redo this all over again, so.
Mr. Kuzno?
You read my mind, Janet. I was thinking the same thing. It's like, I feel like since the first day I was here, we've been reviewing this ordinance and it's been constantly changing. Is that just, is that just standard practice in the planning world kind of thing? Or do we ever say, this is a good document, we will live with this for the next 10 years?
Yeah, well, um, so I guess my comment's one, it's good that there are so many commissioners that remember going through to a certain point. I'm definitely, I don't tinker. I want people to be comfortable with the document though. And so that's part of the reason of doing a technical review is we want to identify issues based on what we've heard. And then we want to have some agreement on that technical review that yes, these are the issues. And if it doesn't come out of those issues, it probably will be untouched, right? So, um, when we have that consensus, maybe we get to the end of this and it can be one or two meetings of review. Um, but I think the other thing practically is that if, um, you know, if the intent is to have a document that then we never make any amendments to, that could actually get us in a point where we're so obsessed with that process that we, we do continue revising it because you want everything to be perfect. You know, I think that, you know, if you do an amendment or two a year, um, that's okay because things change and things arise, you know? Um, but what we want to do in this process is fix some of the larger issues, uh, to make sure the zoning ordinance is reflective of the current plans and the community norms that, um, that we, that we're hearing, you know, well, we want to change. And it, and it, and those, I think it has been a while since we've looked at it with that, that lens. Um, so the time has, has come for us to take that lens again. So, uh, that's a long answer, uh, but I guess the short answer is, yeah, I think it is common to, to make changes. Um, but I think the level we're looking at it now is something that you really do maybe every five years or every 10 years, hopefully.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
So, once we've got to that point, we will schedule a public hearing, and then Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the board on adopting the amendments. Actually, a point of clarification, we'll do a public hearing, and Planning Commission will make a recommendation for the, what we termed urgent amendments, and then also for minor substantive, the minor substantive amendments as well. So we'll do this three times, which is, you know, not uncommon. There, you know, anytime we do amendment, we do this. It's just, since we're looking at the whole thing, we're going to group it a little bit. So we'll anticipate probably at least, at least two, but probably three amendments to go from Planning Commission to the board this year, if it all goes according to schedule. So that's the schedule. Like I said, for, for topics, since Planning Commission approved their annual meeting schedule, I'm going to do some thinking and see if, once that technical review is done, if I can also schedule topical conversations to go along with those meetings, which I think might help the Planning Commission be prepared, and also help move us along because we do have a pretty big work plan. And, yeah, so that is, that's the schedule. I can take additional questions on that, or if we would like to spend some time in, as general discussion, looking at the items that were presented in the October 11, 2017 memo, or if Planning Commission just has any thoughts since then, since we're starting the process, that you'd like to note this evening. I'm here to kind of take notes and incorporate this as we kick, incorporate your ideas as we kick the process off.
Ms. Chick?
I would, my only comment is that I would like to be assured that every time we come to a meeting, we have at least a couple of really substantive things to work on.
Mr. Kuzno.
I had a question about, how does, how does all this information get into the MUNI Code?
I guess I would ask Ms. Byrd if, if there's a standard process when we do amendments. How do we send them to MUNI Code once a year? Is it case by case? Do they go through the attorney first?
No, after it's pre-vented by a PC to the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees approve it, then we will send it to MUNI Code, although I think they only come back once or twice a year, so it's shown.
So how do we get an effective date then on things like that? If, if MUNI Code is our, that's our code that's published, how does it take effect? Or when's the effective date on these things, I guess?
I believe it's 15 days after the Board of Trustees.
Right, but if it's not published, if it's not a public...
It will get published on the Board of Trustees.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be just like a, in our book. Do we have hard copies? Do we, do we still distribute hard copies of this thing?
No, we don't.
But people, can people buy them? It's just, no, it's online, you're good there. Or if you say, if you're looking at our code, you better make sure you're up to date because maybe there needs to be some disclaimer on our, on our website.
I'm not sure if MUNI Code will update the website and if you get hard copies activated. I don't think that function on the, but I think that it did.
We got hard copies, I think, once a year on the MUNI Code after they, because they do their review, and then they, they'll, they'll make changes if something is not correct. Yep.
But I think MUNI Code updated something.
The website.
Yeah, that would be ideal. Right, exactly. That's, I mean, that's what people are using more than anything, I guess, anymore.
Yeah, because for someone to comment, it's a lot of...
Yeah.
Right, but you have all that information at the, down here in the office, so if someone has a question and call the office, they have that information available there, so.
And I do the website of my book, so that if somebody comes in, they are given the option.
Right, but I guess if someone's operating off of the, the online code book, and then they come in presenting something else, or have a meeting with Paul or something, they go, "Oh, shoot, something changed." Yeah, right, that'd be worth knowing. Yeah. All right, thanks.
I think that one was answered, but I was, my comment was going to be, that's pretty common with places I work, that it, MUNI Code gets updated once or twice. But the, you know, the process, the zoning process is in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which has the standards for after it's adopted, it must be published in paper, and then it's effective, I think it's, is it 30 days? 15 days? That sounds right. I could pull it up. But yeah, then it's, it's on, the actual amendments are on file at the township. What we would do as, as the planners would be inform people of those changes before it's on MUNI Code. Yeah.
Ms. Infante.
I'm not sure when or even how one goes about proposing a new ordinance, and this may come up tomorrow, at tomorrow's meeting, but I'm, I'm looking at your amendments to encourage more agricultural tourism and the Wright Farm Act, Farmland Natural Areas Preservation Committee, getting comment from them. And I'm wondering, you know, how does one, I've gotten quite a bit of feedback from people who are really interested in protecting what is unique about our area and really what is above and beyond all, beyond all, unique about the areas, the amount of wetlands that we have. And so there was interest in part to protect the water, the issue with tree mitigation, the idea that we might present an ordinance to protect or oversee the protection of wetlands in the area in accord with state law or maybe even beyond it. And I, if, if people were interested in that, would that be part of this process? I mean, this would be something, obviously, for Planning Commission to discuss, but I had been asked about it by several people in the area of the Jomar product, project, which is why it came up.
Well, I think part of the discussion tonight is to talk about things that have come up since our last discussion. Certainly, as part of the technical review, we'll look at the natural features protection requirements and the ordinance, which we actually, we did discuss at the last meeting. I think that, I guess my tech, take on it would be that I think we could make it clear as to what's required for, for standards, particularly for wetlands or some of the other items in that review, and we can also update it to make sure that it's consistent with current, current regulations, as you suggest, so. But on the other hand, it's pretty, it's pretty strong, and a lot, a lot stronger than I see in many places. So I think that it is, in that respect, kind of an update or a double check that it's still aligned with state regulations, and then the question is, is it functioning procedurally how we want it to with the other review procedures? And we might find that it is, and everything's fine, but the technical review will allow us to provide a recommendation on that, and I've made a note of it tonight.
Thank you. And I didn't want to get into speaking about a specific site that's in the process or going through the process still, so it's a good question, though. Anyone else? How do you like to perceive Mr. Lippens?
I, I think that the, you know, the two comments, you know, I received, you know, one, making sure that we have kind of a substantive part of the zoning process to review at the meetings. I think that the schedule presented here will help ensure that. I think, you know, the next, the next level of this is to look, meeting by meeting, how we structure that information, and, but then also to prepare, I think, the, those, those urgent items is the, probably the next agenda item that we'll look to have something at the February 21 meeting. So we'll start with the urgent items and move forward from there. The second comment was that the, you know, the natural features regulations are an important thing to look at in the technical review, and I think those are two comments. I don't think we need any action, but I guess we have a consensus for the schedule, and if you want to take action specifically on that, we could.
Okay. That's why I was wondering if you'd need us to make a motion to initiate this whole process then? Is that what you...
Sure.
All right, I make a motion that we, that the Planning Commission move forward with the Northfield Township zoning ordinance revisions proposed on the February 2 report from McKenna. Supported by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on the motion? I just want to make the comment that the Planning Commissioners that were absent tonight did indicate they're all in favor of what they reviewed on your memo.
Right.
One was via phone, because he notified me that he was not going to be here, but the other two by email, that they were both positive with the review of this.
Right.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Chick?
Yes. Oh, do you want to do that? I'm sorry.
I'd like you to call the roll, yeah.
All right. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick, yes. Mr. there, oh, Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. So we'll move forward on the agenda. Everyone receive a copy of the minutes from January 17. I make a motion, we approve and dispense a reading.
So moved. Support?
Support by Mr. Kuzno. Comments, questions on the motion, and I'll leave it to Ms. Chick.
There was an original agenda put out, and there was a correction on item number nine under reports on 9A, the very last item, that said that, I mentioned that, agreed that no board member should, was given notice that the commissions will not participate in pre-development meetings, and the board will consider at a future meeting whether board members should attend these meetings. It was initially said that the board agreed with that policy, and they did not. There was no vote.
So scratching the first sentence?
Yep.
Under 9A, the last bullet point?
Right.
Okay. Any other corrections, comments?
If you want to just get rid of that comment, I put a revision in front of everybody's place.
That's, that's what I'm looking at.
You want to get that, so it's not that bad, or just get it rid of.
Or you can just take it out.
You want to take it out?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, take out what? Ms. Chick?
Tell her last bullet on 9A.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it was a comment. It was in the report. You supported it?
I'm sorry, the minutes? Mr. Kuzno. So seeing no further questions or comments on the minutes, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Final call to the public, seeing none, we'll move forward. Comments from Commissioners? Mr. Kuzno.
No comment tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I don't have a, I just thought of something that Ms. Infante brought it up about the natural features. I did recall a resident had mentioned at one of our meetings that, that they would like to see the township adopt a policy, I'm thinking, or, or some kind of a plan to designate certain areas of the township as protected, that there can't be any kind of development. Is that possible?
Mr. Lippens?
I'm asking, yeah, I don't know that you can do that, yeah.
Um, I mean, the master plan could outline policies and strategies, but I, I would say that that would be something to be considered in a master plan process. Certainly in terms of zoning, you know, you, you can't take away the, the legal rights that are attached to a land, so. But that isn't to say that you, you can preserve property, and you can have policies to help preserve property.
Voluntarily, as, as an owner, you can not, the township can't say that area, or can they? Is there some...
I, I would say it all starts with the master plan, and I would, you know, suggest that, and it actually is something to be, that is proposed to be considered in the master plan scope. So there are absolutely growth management strategies that can be pursued and have been pursued in Northfield Township and other areas.
Anything else? Ms. Infante.
It's my understanding, you know, we have state law, and then, of course, we have the Washington County regulations, which, again, I think the reason this comes up often is they're really good, they're really strong, and I think some of this is a matter of perception, which is why I get a lot of comments from residents, too, about, you know, what are we doing? Well, actually, quite a bit, and that's where I'm not quite sure where to address the issue. When someone wants to propose a local ordinance, I think sometimes this comes out of a lack of realization that they're, the master plan's excellent. And I think some people don't realize it, and that's where I don't, I don't know where we go with it as a committee, but it's definitely to be addressed somehow, and I don't know if it needs to be addressed formally, and I don't want to spend a whole lot of time doing something, you know, that's been already done very well in the master plan, but it seems to me a point of perception or public communication management, anyway.
Thank you. I have no comments tonight. Like to announce the next meeting, next regular meeting is February 21, 2018, and I make a motion to adjourn. Supported by Mr. Kuzno. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.